I need a select board to get to order please. Our first item is Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. To a true government which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have one appointment tonight. Slickman invited the River District Commission here to speak to their progress to date and what they're projecting to 2017. So John, are you going to be doing the presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Where would you like me to stand?
Uh...
In the hall, right?
Sure, whatever it is.
Go ahead, that's fine.
All right, thanks Mr. Broatz for having me here tonight. It's been since last December, I checked, that was the last time I came here and did an update for you. So I'm pleased to talk about the last year. And the last time I was here, we were talking about asking the Select Board to support a bond vote in favor of the River District project. And you did, and then that was passed at town meeting last March for $900,000. And part of that discussion with the taxpayers of Littleton was that that $900,000 investment was going to yield further funds from state and federal granting to match that, to enable us to move forward on the project. We have a $7.5 million goal for the project, and we're well on our way there, which I'll talk about. So two things, we'll talk about funding and then we'll talk about construction. So on the funding front, after that bond was passed in June of this past year, we got notice that the federal EDA department gave Littleton $1 million to do the Saranac and Amadeusick Street reconstruction. And then a couple months later, we got notice from Northern Borders, which is another federal grant program, that we've got $100,000 to do rail trail construction, which will be upcoming. And then some really good recent news, just this past Friday, Andrew received a letter from the State Department of Transportation that the town received an $800,000 grant to do downtown sidewalk work here in the community. So that is fantastic recent news to share with everybody. And a big thanks to Kathy Conway and NCIC, she drafted that grant application. And then a big thanks, which I don't say nearly enough, to Andrew and the rest of the town staff. They do a lot of work for these grant applications. It's largely under the radar, often late hours towards the end of the application process, so I don't tear a noise. And other people on the team are very heavily involved. Karen, thank you for everything.
Thanks, John.
Really appreciate all that, that makes these possible. Another big thanks, another person who likes to operate in the background, Brian Ward has been a big catalyst for moving these things forward. I'd like to say thank you to him too, so...
Reback.
So the whole commission and the town are real happy that we received this funding. So in addition, we got notice from the state, they do a whole ranking of all the applications that go into that program. And we applied, it's a two-year cycle, the town applied two years ago and was just out of the money. So we went back to the drawing board and revamped the application and pulled in a number of pieces that we thought would be helpful. And this year statewide, Littleton was ranked second overall out of near 50 applications. So I gave you that information in part of that package, I handed it to you before the meeting. So Andrew's got a map of some of the areas that are going to be positively impacted. So this is going to reconstruct and construct some new sidewalks throughout the community. The biggest one will be Cottage Street that the town's been trying to get done for quite some time now. That's the biggest portion of the $800,000. In addition to that, it's going to construct sidewalk on South Street, Mount Eustis Road, Bronson Street, Mill Street, and it's also going to create a connection from the suspension bridge, the current bridge, to what will be the rail trail, as well as kind of that South Street Riverside Drive intersection, which right now has some temporary easements and is not working the best it could for that property owner there, so we'll improve that area as well. Also Meadow Street, the hill that goes down from the traffic light at this end of Main Street down to Bridge Street, where it's falling down railing and some nasty sidewalk is going to be repaired as well. So a lot's going to get done. $800,000 is matched by $200,000 from the bond that was authorized this year for an 80% grant funding, a 20% local funding match for a million dollars in total of sidewalk work that's going to be done. Questions on that before I keep going? All right. So the total picture of funding then, with that $800,000 we just got, is of the $7.5 million, we've now obtained $5 million total, including the bond fund from the town. So I'm really excited about the work that this is going to be able to allow the town to do. Can I give you that handout too in your package?
John, I have one question. This funding doesn't address the issue of straightening out Saranac Street?
The sidewalk funding doesn't, but the previous grant, yeah.
That's right.
That we received, that are included in this list. We're going to move forward to start construction this coming year, it's going to segue into what we're headed towards.
Is the 2.6 million tied to rents that outstanding, or is that...
Yes.
No application?
Yeah, so we're down to one remaining piece of funding that we're searching for. It's a big piece, but it's the last one that we have been unsuccessful in getting so far. We've applied for the federal type of grant program, which will do the Main Street Phase Two and the Saranac and Meadow Street intersection portion of the project. We've been unsuccessful a few times, and so we'll reapply now, with that being the one remaining piece we're shooting for here. And we'll keep looking for other funding opportunities, but that's the main, the one big piece remaining that we had originally set up.
Thank you.
Yeah, so moving towards construction and what this money's going to be used for. No, you had asked about the Saranac and Amadeusick Street, so that's a $2 million project. And the town just awarded the engineering contract for that, and is going to work toward breaking ground this fall, which is a requirement under one of the funding programs. And then that construction will continue with the following 2018 construction season as well. And so that's going to do the storm water and sewer system and the road and sidewalk from Saranac Street all the way through behind the town offices here.
Good, thank you.
So that sidewalk work, it still needs to be approved by Governor's Council, and then they expect project work to begin within three months after that, so possibly 2017, but also likely 2018. We haven't talked about the exact schedule yet, with that announcement being so recent. And then also this past year, we finished construction on the pedestrian bridge at Bridge Street. Big thanks to Joe DePalma and his crew at Public Works for, once the funding is obtained and the project starts, they play a huge role in keeping an eye on the construction and making sure the town's best interests are realized through that process. So a lot of people play a big role in making this stuff a reality. And then finally, I just wanted to mention some economic activity that's been really the goal of this project. A few examples to share, as they already know about, but worth repeating. Schilling has embarked on a big multimillion dollar expansion over at their facility, which is going to be a big increase to the tax base and some job creation. New investor just bought one of the old central building supply buildings along the river here, with the intention of renovating that, so we're hopeful that that will do the same there that Schilling is doing. And then the Tannery Marketplace is now fully occupied on its main two levels, with only the basement remaining. So we're starting to see some of the positive effects that we had hoped to see with this project. So thanks, and I'll answer any questions if you have.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, John. Thanks for all your work.
We have one item on the Town Manager's Report, which is Proposed Warren Article Two, 2018 Sewer Storm Water Roadway Project Bond. Long title.
Yeah, it's a long one, and it's a lot of money behind it, so...
Want to walk us through that?
Sure, yeah, so, and Joe's going to give us some details here in a second too, but Sub Area Five, the sewer system in Littleton was divided into seven sub-areas and then studied for issues in infiltration and breakages and blockages and that sort of, and infiltration from storm water. And Sub Area Five was determined to be the most immediate concern. And so what we've done is created a package that would address the concerns in Sub Area Five. Let me give you some of the details about it. The flow at certain points in the sewer collection system, after monitoring, showed, the data shows that there are large amounts of inflow and infiltration into the sewer mains and manholes. The water increases operational costs at wastewater treatment facility and reduces the hydraulic capacity otherwise available for future growth at our facility. The project of Sub Area Five includes the northern sections of Pleasant Street, Pine Street, Evergreen Lane, Union Street, Chiswick Avenue, and Cross Street. It has 197 full-time residential housing units, 14 businesses service, and 2.25 people per household in 2010. If we do the math, it comes out to 443 individuals, which is about 7.5% of the town's population in Sub Area Five. So the sewer in this area is recommended for replacement. In Union Street, it's a high-traffic area, so we're looking at trying to do a repair in place there, which is the ability to put a material inside, Joe can explain it more fully, but you can slide the material in and it will adhere to the outer side, sealing it up. And on the other streets, it looks like we need to do a full replacement. The cost for the project is roughly $2 million. It'll involve storm drains, sewer, the roadway itself, and materials underneath. And the reason the project is $2 million, it also includes full pavement. And what it will do is help align the town's paving plan with sewer infrastructure and storm water infrastructure improvements, so that we're not paving and then coming up back later and ripping roads up. And by doing this, it enables us to take our paving dollars a lot further. For example, we just did two streets, and Joe can talk to a little further, but I think it was roughly half a million dollars of taxpayer and sewer money to do the same thing, a sewer and a storm drain and pavement replacement and some water lines as well. And the taxpayers, sewer users, water users have to fit 100% of the bill. What this plan does is it enables the sewer funds and taxpayer funds to be matched with USDA and state clean water funds, so that the taxpayers are only coming up with between 30 and 40% of the money to do the work. If you look on the screen above, it just, this just shows you the project area. And Joe's going to speak a little more to the inflow issue. I don't know if you want to go ahead and talk a little bit about that?
Sure, the inflow issue, he's speaking about the pipes in Sub Area Five. There's fractures, we have other photos here. There's fractures, breaks, tree roots growing right through them. There are sections where we can't get our cameras through even to video camera the pipes because the flow was so restricted inside. It's a situation that's getting worse, not better, obviously, with time. So we've spent a lot of time, Andrew and George MacRae Formey, surveying this and coming up with a good plan. And in addition to the pipes being in such poor condition and so much water infiltrating in, the flip side, the other side of that is what it does to the wastewater treatment plant. Before I go to that, just to go back to what Andrew said about making our tax dollars go further with paving. So this past year, we spent over half a million dollars on two roads and roughly similar linear footage. This match that he was proposing, it would be less than that, and we'll get more, more for less.
Joe, is a lot coming in just through the fractures, or is it coming directly from runoff?
It's coming from fractures in the pipe, it's coming from runoff into some of the structures itself that are, we have videos of, photos of, some structures themselves. Sewer structure, sewer man, what's a structure, a sewer manhole broken up. And water just coming in through that, when the water, especially in the spring, when the water table is high, specifically when, in the spring. What makes, when the water table is high, the water is always right there, and it's just, it's coming right in. Two outpipes into our structure, and to your point, Mr. Tennessee, in March this past year, it's been a pretty dry year, if you do that, we had 3.2 inches of rain in March. And just 3.2 inches of rain caused our treatment plant, this goes to where I was going next with this whole thing, how this is going to affect the treatment plant, the mind, the roads and the pipes. With 3.2 inches of rain in March, our treatment plant was in violation of our EPA permit. We're only allowed to go to 80% capacity if you have a cup. It can only be 80% full, it can't be 100% full, there's always going to be 20% there. With 3.2 inches of rain, we went to 90% capacity for the whole month. Three months in a row, three months consecutive of that would cause us to be in violation, and they could then, DES could then request some remedial work. If they don't like our response to the request, it becomes a mandate, and now you're looking at, I don't know, 15, 12, 15 million dollars to change the plan or upgrade the plant. So this has ramifications, not just in the road, fixing the sewers in that area and getting new pavement on top of all that. It's what it's doing down the plant. Then when you talk about expanding the industrial plant, industrial park, and do we have the capacity? All these infiltration issues are magnified. You can't, we can't expand the industrial park because we don't have the room, the capacity at our wastewater plant because of areas around town that are infiltrating in, so it's all tied to, it's all in the circle. At the plant, you know, we talked about, last couple meetings ago, about this septic receiving station we took in that's going to meter the trucks that come in. When a truck from, say Schofield or White or something like, comes in and dumps septic, we have to dilute that with 100,000 gallons of our street water, we call it, the water's coming in, to dilute that enough to get that to pass through our system. So all these infiltration numbers tie into everything we're doing at the plant, from even the septic halls coming in, to what we can do with expansion and our DES permits specifically. Where we're at now is that we're at, we're less than, we're less than half-capacity right now during a dry day. But like I said, if we go, if it keeps raining, if we get rain and we don't start addressing some issues, we're going to be too high to do anything else in the town.
I have to say, as I said last time, for a community, this is a really big deal for us because when I read the report back in 2011 from the engineering firm that did the initial camera search, et cetera, there are numerous areas in town that are just like this area in terms of inflow and water running and pipes breaking. And this is a big deal for us as a community. And it's going to take a number of years to address this, but this is going to be, it's good that we combined it with some federal money coming in, because if we ever get to that mandate stage, and every time they do have a, you know, a violation of the capacity issue, they have to call and let them know. So they keep counting of how many times you're getting the call from the community. So you presented well, thank you, and this report looks good.
And if to speak to what Joe's talking about, look at the chart on the top. That tracks rain, precipitation, and also the number of gallons that are going to the plant. You can see in the winter, the precipitation in gray doesn't affect it at all, but it's a direct correlation.
Joe, aren't there still a number of places where runoff from buildings goes directly into the sewer line?
So unseparated water, sewer versus storm drain. We spend, I spend some time, when I have time, dropping dye tablets into roof drains. And I have two guys out in the street with cell phones or radios trying to figure out where some things are going. Yes, we're still working on that, and we have some buildings that we were suspicious of, we eliminated, we still have more to go. But to that point, not just commercially, residentially, a lot, it's very common practice. If you have a sun pump in your basement that's pumping water every time it gets rainy or cloudy in the spring, the water table's high, and you have no place to run that sun pump, so you tie it into your interior plumbing, into the sewer. That's commonplace, unfortunately, in a lot of areas of town. So we have, we have taken this Sub Five study with Andrew, and we've asked the frame group to add in features that will allow us, if we were going via, going through your neighborhood and doing this job, which I hope we do, we can run a drain line over to your property line, so if you have issues there in your basement or with your roof drainage, you have no place to disperse your water without giving it to a neighbor because it's a pretty dense area, a lot of Sub Five is pretty dense. We've made, we've made accommodations in this, there's accommodations in this to address that issue. You could then have your own sun pump going in. Some people's sun pumps are running seven or eight months a year in that neighborhood. It's a significant amount. Like I said, just three inches of rain in March, and this is what they do out there. So we don't have, we don't have everything figured out quite yet, but we have a lot of it well, well on the right track.
So this next chart just shows a funding breakdown, it's not very clear on the screen, but it's estimated that on the $2 million project, USDA would provide $900,000. The New Hampshire Clean Water Reserve Fund will, as already committed, $320,000 to the project. The sewer fund likely would have $430,000, and the taxpayers would have $350,000, which would really be covering pavement.
So our current formula of 14 cents per 100,000. So we've got three 100,000s here, plus percentage, so it comes to about 59 cents.
Right.
Am I right?
And so in keeping with, you know, a kind of an average of what the taxpayers have been used to with paving, this would be within that range, if not under, a little bit. And again, this is a bond article that is on the 2017 ballot, but it has a zero, zero impact on the 2017 budget. This is for a 2018 project. The USDA requires that we get a bond vote this far in advance before we can seek their funding.
Good. Any other questions? Thank you.
Any comments?
Pardon me? Not yet, but we will soon. If I can find my agenda, we'll even move forward. Oh, got it, got it. We have no other business. We do have all business to 2017, Warren Article Review and Vote. There's a few articles that the Budget Committee couldn't complete because they ran out of enough members to have a quorum. So we have, and is there other areas here that you need to touch on too, on this report? Other than that, we just have the Opera House Energy Reduction. That's RFO 17, 18 is stage rigging at the Opera House, and then the Building Maintenance, and the Park Building Replacement Fund, Tractor and More. Those are the only ones that we still have.
We have a new one with the, the library has changed what we had originally thought we were going to get from the library. And we have one new petition, Warren Article, that came in today, that wasn't on this list we weren't expecting.
Is that the...
The Caleb Caregivers?
$2,000?
Yes.
Well, we have passed over all the petition articles, so we'll probably, we'll pass over this one as well, but that's the only other ones that we have to do, right?
The budget.
And the library building improvements capital reserve.
And the budget, proposed budget, and the storm water.
I'm not, neither one of these fellows have been able to look at the budget, so I'm going to pass on this. We'll have to bring it back. So are we looking to begin with the Opera House Energy Reduction? It's a proposed request of $44,200. There's no offsetting funds. The tax rate is a little over six cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
Question. Since we have to vote on all this anyway, do we really have to need a motion or second to vote? I'm required to vote on these.
We are required to vote on these, and we do take each one individually, as we did, you know, the ones above.
Second.
All those in favor indicate in the affirmative. Chairman votes no. The next one, I dropped the speaker. The next one is Opera House Stage Rigging, $15,000. There's offsetting funds of $15,000, there's no tax impact here, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor indicate in the affirmative? Aye?
No.
No?
No.
Opera House Building Maintenance, $5,000, there's no offsetting...
No, that's $20,000, isn't it? No, that's the one. No, I'm sorry.
Maintenance.
Yeah, maintenance. And there's no offsetting fees, it's a $5,000 request. It's seven tenths of a penny, if I'm reading that correctly. Yeah, it's an impact. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor indicate in the affirmative? No one has voted for that.
No, the nays.
Yep, I'm sorry, all those opposed.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Or nay, nay, nay. Opera House Building Maintenance, I'm sorry, Remick Park Building Replacement Fund, $20,000. There's no offsetting fees, the request is for $20,000. It's almost three cents on the tax rate, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor indicate in the affirmative?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So we have two opposed, the article doesn't pass, or the request doesn't pass. Tractor, $13,000, I'm assuming this is from the, oh yeah, Parks and Recreation. $13,000 request, there are no offsetting funds, the request is for $13,000. It's 1.8 cents on the tax rate, do I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor indicate in the affirmative?
Aye.
Chairman votes no. Article, or the request passes. The last one is Lawn Mower, 48, where's that, 48?
48, yes.
48, yeah.
It says...
It's a big blade.
Yeah. $7,000 request, there's no offsetting funds, the request is $7,000. It's a penny on the tax rate, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second, all those in favor indicate in the affirmative?
Aye.
Chairman votes no. We have... Oh, the library. And I broke this new one now. Library Building Improvements Capital Reserve Fund, $15,000. There's no offsetting funds, the request is for $15,000. It's a little over two cents on the tax rate. The Budget Committee hasn't voted on this one yet. You guys want to go ahead and vote on it anyway?
Sure.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, all those, all those in favor indicate in the affirmative? All those opposed?
Aye.
Three opposed, doesn't pass. And the last one, do we have one more here? Or did we finish it?
The Caleb.
Oh, the Caleb Caregivers. Yeah, we passed over the Caleb one, as we have the others. Okay, that takes care of that.
Did you get the, the bond, sewer storm water?
No, we didn't.
Oh, we have to go up to the bond.
I'd move that.
Again, it's a $2 million bond request, there's an offsetting amount, it's really not $2 million.
What's that?
It's not really a $2 million offset.
There's, well, there's no, it's, we have to put it this way, because there's no tax impact this year.
We have to do, I'm sorry, okay. Do I have a motion? Second? Okay, all those in favor indicate in the affirmative?
Aye.
And we'll hold on the budget until we saw it's a better chance to do it.
Okay, and just to clarify, the bond in 2018, expected tax impact is four cents? Not, not 50 cents, but four cents?
Okay. Alrighty. We are down to no new business, and we're down to public comments. Brian, you had your hand raised.
Yeah, I just want to speak in favor of the bond that you guys just voted to do, which I know I'm going to start to be very... About 10 years ago, Larry Jackson...
About 10 years ago, Larry Jackson told me, because he was head of Public Works at the time, that one out of every two gallons that was being processed at the sewer stream plant was through infiltration, infiltration and/or cross connects. When Main Street was done, one of the driving issues to redo Main Street was to disconnect the roof drains on the northern side of Main Street, on the riverside, the other side, to get them out of the sewer system and put them into the storm drain system. And that was accomplished through Main Street Part One. One of the hidden values of the River District, which really hasn't been discussed, is that the same thing is going to occur on the riverside of the buildings that have the flat roofs. When that is dug up, those will be taken care of. Larry actually told me, I don't know if he's had a chance to talk with Joe, but the building of Rick Tilden, which is on the corner of Mill Street and Main Street, they have no idea where the sewer line is for that building. Never been able to find out where it connects. And so when that gets dug up, similar to what happened on Main Street, probably even more so because the infrastructure is older in the River District than it was what replaced the 30s in the, on the Main Street project. We're going to get a tremendous amount of savings by eliminating those cross connects on all of those buildings. To give you an example, I think it was two years ago, Karen Webber, who spent about $50,000 to fix that problem right in front of Shillings.
Yes.
And one of the problems was it kept flooding and the reason it flooded was the building that was right across the street. The roof drains were connected into the storm system, excuse me, into the sewer line. So while the town spent $50,000 for a temporary fix, the main thing accomplished was to get those roof drains out of the sewer system and we, and you talked about what Joe was talking about, that three inches of rain that we got. If we had gotten that and it hadn't happened, we would have had the flood again. So there's some real value to what's happening on the River District, not to mention the project that you're bringing forward to do that. And I think you guys have put together a great funding package to address some long-term needs in the area. And I salute the leadership on that because this is literally money in the bank. And one of the things, I asked Larry about it maybe five years ago, he said, what would it cost us to replace our sewer treatment plant, which was built in two phases? It was, the original phase was built in 1963 and then the other one was built sometime, I think it must have been in the 70s, the second origin. He said at that time about $25 million. So you probably would be off of $30 million to replace that. So for every gallon, and Joe had mentioned that, that you can eliminate from going through that sewer treatment that does not have to be treated. It's not just a gallon that's for additional capacity, it's a gallon that we don't then have to spend to build additional capacity. The last higher thing the town needs is another $15 million sewer treatment plant addition. So there's some real serious economics outside of the good funding package that will be really helpful in the long-term basis and the River District will contribute to that. And it's hard to figure out what those are until you actually get rid of the cross connects and get rid of the infiltration. But there will be enhanced capacity for that sewer treatment plant, which is one of the most valuable things we have for our economic expansion. One of the things we've been able to do is if a company shows up and they contact Greg, we've got the water, we've got the sewer, we've got the electricity, we're ready to roll. Many other communities don't have that type of infrastructure capacity and this bond will go a long way to, again, extending the lifeline of that. So I know I persuaded you, you already voted for it.
Thank you. Good job. Just a second. You're talking about canceling the meeting.
The work session?
But we, but we still have to vote on, we haven't voted on the budget yet, so we got the budget hearing on the 17th, so.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we promised you. We reinstated that one.
So we're on.
Yeah, we'll wish that out.
We're still on. We haven't taken it.
I don't know where I'm going with the calendar here.
With all the additions and stuff.
Yeah, put that back on.
We'll send you a calendar invite, so you know.
It's good if you just have a calendar book because then you don't have to do that. Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to harp on basically the same thing I've been harping on now since I've become these meetings. As a taxpayer, looking at the tax rate, the $2.59 increase, we just got hit with it, we weren't even expecting. The budget, I think from what I've been watching, what I've been looking at, you've done a great job. Every time I see a new budget, it's down less and less to less. My concern is with this sewer drain thing, you said it's four cents per thousand for that $350,000 bond?
For 2018, Karen can explain that in more detail.
Because $400,000 bond is 57 cents per gallon. So how can that be so cheap?
Well, the grant portion, that's 1.6 million, can be set up as a separate loan and it's a one-year loan. And that is called a grant anticipation note or bridge note. The interest on that is less than 2%. So the only time we'd be paying the interest would be in 2018 when we get all the grant money back and paid off all the grant money and then the interest. So the interest is about $25,000 on a one-year, $1.6 million loan. The $400,000, and I rounded up to $400,000 because we're looking at 2 million. So we could do a loan for that for three or five years. If we wanted to pay it off all at once, we could, but we would need to do some special type of warrant article to be able to do that. We were looking at financing it and I came up with either three-year or five-year. So you're looking at smaller payments instead of a one-time payment. You're looking at a five-year at about $85,000 a year, once you started making payments on it. And then the three-year would be $137,900. So based on what you end up with, and we could even go 10 years if we wanted to, but I don't like to go that long for a short-term, smaller loan. So your payments would be a lot less and you wouldn't have a full payment in 2018 because you wouldn't be drawing all of that money down until after everything was finished.
So that would be a four cent per year over a three to five-year period?
It could be over a five-year period.
Over a five-year period. Four cents per year over a five-year period?
It's a nice to do.
All right. And again, as a taxpayer, I'm struggling to find out how I'm just going to come up with the $800 from this last tax bill I got hit with. But as I look at this, it's just, I know we need that stuff. I know there's things on here we need, there are critical, and I agree 100% with the critical need to do stuff. But I bet you could go back down through the budget, I bet you could cut out a million and a half dollars worth of nice-to-do stuff, like community house, an opera house and all that, a library and all that other stuff that's nice to do, but it's not going to sink our cars into a hole in the road. So again, I'm 100% against some of this stuff, the nice-to-do stuff. I just want you guys to know that it's, the tax impact, when I get that on, it's going to be significant over the next three to four years. Especially if you're going to do seven sections, you're talking about five times seven, 35 years of payments here to get all that paid for that the town right now is voting to say, okay, we're going to have payments for the next seven years on this, all this stuff, or 35 years on all this stuff. So I'm just, I just sit here and see all that money coming out of this town and thinking, where are the people going to come up with the tax money to pay for it?
Yes, sir.
Just to answer some of that, in 2017, we have about 160,000 in loan payments that 2017 is the last year of the payments on them. So that should cover some of the payments that we're looking at with this bond. That should help even out some of that effect.
But you also got payments coming in for the transfer station for $100,000. You got, you're going to do the light duty truck over a three-year period, so you're still going to keep adding future payments that we're going to have to cover for the next, however many years based on this year's vote.
We also have payments that were ending for vehicles and an excavator that we bought a couple of years ago that are ending this year. So as.
Which would be nice if they just ended and went away. They didn't have to pick up any more future payments. I mean, we just got to figure out how to, you know, get rid of some of this nice-to-do stuff and help the taxpayers out. Town could give you a loan for $800, pay my taxes if they'd like to because I was struggling to figure out. And by the way, I start Tuesday down here at Harbor Freight because I can't pay that $800. That 2.9% just kills me. So.
Congratulations on the Harbor Freight job. But just to clarify also, I don't know what the projections will be because we put in for a study grant this year to study the next section, which is, looks like it'll be subsection two. But this is the section that is in the worst condition, so it's not likely that the other areas are going to need.
As much.
As much.
And I understand, like I said, this is something that absolutely has to be done.
Right.
But there's a lot of stuff in this year's budget that are just nice-to-do stuff. And in my opinion, we don't need it. That's, that's all I got to say.
Joe?
Just to go back to Brian, I had the data in front of me today, Brian, that reflected your point about Main Street infiltration dropping off when that work was completed. I didn't know we were going to go this far back, Ryan, I would have caught it. But it went, his point is valid, the numbers won't weigh down. These plans do work. I know we already voted for it, but just people to know going forward, it's going to go up before the town. Brian was 100% right, our numbers won't weigh down when we do Main Street. And I have the data, I can break the next meeting, the hot data to prove that. And the backside of Main Street, to Brian's point, I feel like I talked about the sewer a little too much, but when John presented the River District thing, I've been thinking about how much infrastructure we're going to gain in addition to the sidewalks, whichever infrastructure and the infrastructure that you're not going to see. I think about it, it's a big game back there for all that work that needs to take place. We're going to have it covered into that one grant. Just want to support, reinforce what Brian has mentioned. And I spent a lot of time back there, last few months, trying to figure out where those pipes go, Brian, coming from that Tilden block down towards the Shillings and all that. And I have a lot of it figured out, maybe not all yet, but there's, we've done a lot back there. We probably find Jimmy Hoffner down there if you want.
I think Andrew's point regarding that section, remember last, at our last meeting, I said, this engineering firm has touched most of the high danger, danger is maybe not the word, but the high areas of concern within the first report, which was five years ago. But all of, all of the different seven areas have some work that has to be done, but this is probably the biggest, biggest one right now. And because it affects other systems, we've got to do this work. So thank you.
Whitefield has contacted us about how we run our plant. Horizon Engineering is working with Whitefield and updating or building a new plant there. It's a real, like I said, I feel like I'm talking a little too much, but it's a big deal. Other towns are looking at wrestling with these numbers now that we look, that we might have to wrestle with if we don't do these other steps now. It's a great facility. What we have there, it's been analogically, like Brian said, it's actually being copied. They've asked what we charge. They've been asking how much our rates are, which is public information anyways. The whole area is watching, watching our system.
Rudy?
Yes. I'm pretty sure that people appreciate, you know, what Brian said because I think he knows the town very well, he knows that $2 million, you know, he's going to do a lot of good for the town and for the sewer and stuff like that. One thing that, you know, Mr. Ward, anybody else should talk about, it's all the other spending money. It's like, you know, Freddy said, yes, we needed this money, you know, for infrastructure and stuff like that. How about all this, you know, sense of spending? I mean, you know, you've got forty, what have you got? You've got about forty, forty one acres over here, okay? I mean, if you guys know that you need this money over here to do the infrastructure, you know how much weight you guys have been putting on the taxpayer? Hey, I don't want to brag, I know three people that they said they're not going to pay the taxes here because they got no money. Hey, I know two of them that they're going to leave their house, he said, I don't care. What I'm trying to say is this, yeah, the town is beautiful, you know, Mr. Ward tells us everything that we need because if all over here, nothing better than anybody else. Yes. But when you guys know that you need this kind of money for infrastructure, if somebody comes to you and say $150,000, it's like Joseph Tussaud. You guys bought two 2-1 and a tractors, right? But you bought the two 2-1 and a tractor? You know what happened the last time we are meeting? Tell them. They got four tractors or something like that. Tell them, Fred.
Well, what he's referring to is they got, if they approve these, they'll have four driving tractors with two employees. So adding two new tractors makes no sense at all because they got four driving tractors now with these two that we're adding on. They'll have five, but they're trading one in, which leaves them four still. So to have two, to add two tractors to this bill where we've got so much added to it, it's just crazy. It's just, it's nice to do stuff.
Before you vote, I mean, because see this tractor, if they work or not, if they don't work, we're going to give them the money because they need the tractor. But you guys are saying, yes, 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 yes. Oh, money doesn't grow on trees. People starve. What do you mean? I know that people starve.
Rudy, one of the, one of the issues here is, as we've talked before, the number of warrant articles, the total number is based on petitioned articles that come in that we're obligated to print.
Yes.
And, you know, we've passed over those, we're not going to vote on those. There may be some in there that we would individually vote on or not vote on. And our legislator, legislators from Littleton are now working on a bill to make it so that it's not a no vote if you pass over. And that'll be a couple of years down the road. But remember, we get a lot of petitioned articles here and what's important for all of us when we go into the voting booth, none of us go in with a calculator. And so when we vote yes on things, we're not adding it up. And so the total impact is what it is. But I think as Fred said, you know, the point is most of these things, even for those of us who may have voted no on certain things, it's not that they're not necessary at some point, but we felt for right now, they may not be necessary for this particular year, but others were. And we didn't have, you know, a combined three votes on some of this. So it is difficult. One of the, one of the advantages to the old town meeting way of doing things was that you sat there till two in the morning and you voted it all up or down. The disadvantage was that most people went home at nine o'clock. And so you wound up with 15, 20, 30 people at midnight voting on budget items. What makes the Senate Bill Two model, what we're in right now, good is that we get 1,500 to 2,000 voters sometimes, you know, for these articles. But we all go into individual voting booths and we vote on it there and that's where it builds up. So we are obligated to take those petitioned ones that come in. And all we can do as individuals, if we don't like them, is to stand out there and say, vote with a sign, vote no on this article, vote no on that article, because it's the only way to influence people one way or the other. So both models have their positives and their negatives and this is the one that we're in right now.
I understand that, you know, but if the people are taking consideration of the way you guys vote, if they watch Channel Two, if they see, you know, the two that sell it to me and vote yes, you know, on any item, right? If they don't know what the hell they're talking about, what do they say?
Well, but that's, but that's our individual vote.
This is just a little thing, the tractor. This guy, they want a new tractor, and they got four of them over there, three of them over there. Are you kidding me or what?
Anyone else? Any other comments? Yes, John?
Well, back to my earlier comments, I neglected to talk about the Saferoots to School project and it wasn't part of my comments, but it's of good public interest. The town was able to move that project forward at a faster pace and it had funding from the state to do that project. So the Pleasant Street and Union Street improvements will actually be done on a faster schedule and it's slated to begin, I believe, this spring or summer.
Boy, am I glad you said that. In other meetings, I bring up Pleasant Street periodically because some of the. because some of those, some of those sidewalks are turning to dirt. And it's, and it is a safe routes to school route, and it clearly needs to be addressed. So I'm glad you brought that up.
And for Seth, hopefully go out to bid this spring.
Okay.
And I also, I also think it's important that everyone know and not be confused that Budget Committee and its selectmen are recommending. You guys still vote. You don't have to take our recommendations.
Excuse me, you're not going to influence the vote?
I didn't say that.
You're not going to influence the vote?
I didn't say that. I said, "They're recommendations." You still pull the lever or mark the box in this case. It's your vote. Do what you think is right.
That's right. Hearing no other comments or requests for comment, we will move into, well, we have no, we have no, yeah.
I think we should mention that the public hearing on the bond and budget.
It's next week.
The bond is Tuesday. It starts at 5:00.
Right. Up at the high school.
Up at the high school.
Right.
Is it 5:00 or 6:00?
No, we moved it to 5:00, or they moved it to 5:00.
The bond part starts at 5:00.
Well, thank you. I was going an hour late. We have no reason to go into non-public?
No, this time.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I might have, I'm a simple, I don't have...
I asked, I asked.
What do you think Rudy was going?
I didn't know that. Well, I only had this simple question.
Okay.
When's the state going to turn on that traffic light down there on Meadow?
We haven't heard from them yet, have we?
No.
Have you heard anything from them?
No.
They just sit there and do nothing.
It's still under study.
And I, I'm afraid, I'm afraid they'll open up and, and the people are still coming out of the park. And it's getting dangerous every time it goes on.
You know...
That's all I got to say.
Eddie, I, I could be wrong, but I think the night they presented over at the Opera House, they, they cited one community that was under study for eight years.
Yeah.
So...
It was the Opera House.
So hopefully that won't happen to us. And, you know, we clearly let them know, as have other people, that what our concerns are here, so... Okay, has Harbor Freight contacted them? Andrew?
Yes, yeah, yeah, they're concerned about it as well.
Oh, yeah.
I think they said at the hearing that they're going to have a decision by the end of the year.
Yeah, that's right.
It is, which year though?
That's a good point, too.
I love to hear this year.
I thought they, I thought they said 90 days. Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate in the affirmative. All right. Thank you, people, for coming tonight. We'll see you next Tuesday.